Call the building committee to order.
And I'll pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we sit down, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Ralph Mitchell, formerly of the Whitman Finance Committee, passed away this week. Thank you. Okay, there are no agenda adjustments for the school committees, and this committee is being recorded because we have some remote participation.
There is no agenda adjustments to the school building committee. This meeting is being recorded because we have remote participation. All of our votes will be done by roll call.
Okay, any public comment? I can see Fenway on there yet. We can all come back to it. Fenway, are you on the line?
This is Mateo with Suffolk on the phone number, just FYI.
Thanks, Mateo. Okay, now she's not on, Jack. Okay, so we'll skip that. The next item is to approve the minutes. I would say a motion to approve the minutes from the February 12th, 2005, school committee. Okay, Abington.
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanover?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Ashfield?
Yes.
Norwell?
Yes.
Rockland?
Yes.
Situit?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yeah.
Okay, that motion was unanimous. Reports, so that would be the president's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And in your package is the internship report for February 28th. The cover page, we have a state champion in the wrestling program. This is exciting, and I guess the program was very successful throughout the state tournament. So congratulations to the team. We also have a baking bread. A lot of constituents from North Carolina, just not they've been very active. And our own Brian Chandler, who met up with that wrestling champion, and she showed off her state trophy, so things are very good. Next week, semi cash balances, right now we get about $4.5 million in bank. Going to all revenue. Again, we did the billing as of February 1st. So we received our assessments from Hanover, Noel, Rockland, and Situit. $1.01 million in revenue there. Everything else is coming through the door. No major issues with our second thing. We're chasing my bill for one payment, but that's not a big deal. And down below, we did receive a check of 70 fund payment as expected, along with our first installment of our regional transportation payment of $386,000. So overall, that's a good sign. Because normally, this is, it's usually 50/50. So we budgeted 684, we got 386 now. So we might be in the $75,000-100,000 of budget surplus on the regional transportation at the end of the year. And that's a motive, so a little over $2 million together. Expenditures, again, for the month, a little over $900,000, which 819 is payroll. Everything else, the utilities are up a little bit. We have, again, we're dealing with the colder months now, and the rates seem to continue to increase. We are still taking advantage of the Situit solar field, but that field is getting older and probably not producing as much as it did back in the early days. And everything else is going well. Well, we have a negative in the health insurance because we prepaid our health insurance back in July. I mean, excuse me, January. But everything's on track. It has slowed down a little bit on the supplies. I think after all the teachers are reassessing what they need to get through the end of the year. So we'll probably have to push through the next month or so, February and March, to load up whatever supplies needed to get us through the end of the year. So that is it for the training report.
Okay, I ask for a motion to accept February training report. So, second. Okay. Jim, does that solar field, is that included between here? We got it, we have the United States of America.
The United States of America, yeah.
Yeah.
No, that's our process.
Any other?
Well, we have budget transfers, just to get through the year with moving around numbers. We're adding money to the medical supplies and professional fees, and we've been moving it out of the minimum payment, which is identified savings for the year.
Okay, on a trigger report, Abington.
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanover?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Ashfield?
Yes.
Norwell?
Yes.
Rockland?
Yep.
Situit?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
That vote was unanimous.
I jumped ahead, I jumped ahead. Now the budget transfer piece, now that you voted on the current report, the budget transfer again, $16,000 moving out of minimum payment to the professional fees and medical supplies accounts.
And then entertain a motion to put a motion. George?
Yep.
On Cohasset? And Deanne for Whitman? Okay, Abington?
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanover?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Ashfield?
Yes.
Norwell?
Yes.
Rockland?
Yes.
Situit?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Unanimous, that vote was unanimous also. Anything other updates, Jim?
Everything's all set.
Okay. Okay, I'll now recognize Dr. Hickney to his report.
Hey, we recognize you too, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Good evening. Couple of brief items under my report. First one, vocational admissions regulations. You may recall, I mentioned this briefly at our last meeting. So the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education put out for public comment on March 10th, changes to the rules involving how schools with admissions policies would have to make adjustments relative to the selective criteria that they use. A brief summary and then a next step suggestion from me. The summary is, schools like ours are allowed to use up to five criteria: grades, attendance, discipline, letters of recommendation, and interviews. We use grades, attendance, discipline, and an interview. The way that the regulations are drafted right now, with the children in your towns that are currently in seventh grade, the process would then become no longer using grades, no longer using an interview, and no longer using recommendations. So the draft regulations would essentially go as follows. A student would apply. They would have to demonstrate some level of interest, which is a new element that we have been asking be included in the regulations. The Department of Ed has included it. I don't think it's at a, I don't think it's at a level that is where we want it. It's a pretty low bar to demonstrate interest, but I can get into the weeds on that another time. But if a child applies and demonstrates interest, so let's say they go to an open house. They've demonstrated interest. Now, from this point forward, the only, it's essentially would go into a lottery. And the way that the lottery would work in our world is that we would still be allowed to have our town apportioned seats. But instead of the children being admitted based on a ranked application score, they would be admitted with a couple of options. We could use a criterion for attendance, which would be the following. If the child has fewer than 27 unexcused absences in the two years before they apply, they would get an extra, I'm going to use the term raffle ticket. So you get a raffle ticket if you apply and you show interest. One goes in the bucket. You could earn a second raffle ticket if your unexcused absences are under 27 for half of, let's just, let me put it this way, for the half of eighth grade and all of seventh grade. If you meet that standard, you could have a second ticket in the bucket. And then the third category would be with discipline. And discipline would be, you could earn a third raffle ticket if you have not been suspended for statutory suspensions like guns, or drugs, or weapons, or assault. Or if you've been suspended for under 10 days for what's referred to as, the statute I'm throwing at you is 37 each and three quarters, which refers to, you can tell that they were adding in extra paragraphs to that law over time. That's basically other suspensions that don't fall into those pretty high octane categories. So the model right now is what the state would refer to as a weighted lottery. And the lottery, once again, would be, everybody has access to the lottery with at least that application, and you could earn additional weights for those other two categories. This version that I've just described was not the version that the state had put out two weeks prior. In February, they had a model where they had some, what I would call, gatekeeper criteria, which would be, you wouldn't get admitted to the lottery if you had excessive absenteeism or disciplinary issues. So the conversation in the vocational community is talking about, are the loss of these criteria and standards going to be detrimental to our admissions process? Is it inherently unfair? When I was at our advisory meeting, advisory committee meeting last night, I said, I would want to advocate for a system that maintains standards and can still be fair. The Department of Ed is doing its job by saying there might be some bias in admissions systems. That is something that always needs to be looked at. For the last three years, the Department has put out data suggesting where there might be bias. What do I mean by that? It might mean that, in the Department's mind, if we have a bunch of applicants and we're accepting students, and let's say the classification is special ed. So they might say, you've offered admission to this percentage of non-special ed kids and this percentage of special ed kids, and they look at the gap. And the suggestion might be, if both groups of kiddos are not getting offered admission at the same percentage, you should look to see whether there's some bias in the system. Our collective position statewide for the last three years has been, well, I'll speak for myself. I've asked with no success, could I get some data on the students that we don't admit? And maybe I could compare their results to see if I should bring back to the school committee a recommendation to tweak one or more of the selective criteria. So in any event, the way that I'm seeing this at the moment is that there will be a lottery. We, as a school district, have had a long admissions policy set by the school board that says we apportion seats by town. A future school committee could change that, but that is how we have operated, and that is how this has made sense to our school district communities for a long time. So the messaging now, or the action right now, and my messaging is, this is what I think. Here's the factual information, here's what's being put out there. And the state has offered a public comment period through April 18th. And then it's understood that the state will, I think, I think they will take the feedback, they'll weigh the feedback, they'll look at what they drafted. And then it's likely that something will go in front of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education at their May 20th meeting. If the regulations are approved, they would go into effect for, like I said, the current seventh graders who will apply to our school in eighth grade. If I could offer one promising change that seems to be in these regulations, it would be in the area of what I've called access. That the state has heard us, that there need to be some minimum criteria across the Commonwealth for how our sending communities allow us to engage with and talk to students, allowing them to come on a tour during the school day and essentially ensure that access to information is not yet another obstacle to kids. Our working theory is, if you can improve access, you can also communicate with sending schools about what our expectations are, and that might help. So to me, this is something that's very important. We are, the Vocational Administrator Organization is working diligently. As individuals, I'd like to send you more information about what's the latest and encourage you that whatever your individual opinion might be, that's certainly something you can respond to. There is a governor's constituent services phone number you can call, and there are, there are a couple of emails. And this is the public comment window, and then the Department of Education takes the public comment and assembles it. I've already submitted my own comment, speaking as an individual. I intend to submit some additional commentary focused on the access piece, as well as some other ideas. But for now, I just wanted to, I wanted to put this in a little more detail. Document four in your packet, for whatever it's worth to you, when you get the chance, section six of that packet, which I'm not going to point to now, so you don't have to rifle through to find it, that's really the heart of where the admissions changes are. But if you have any other questions, you know, by all means, I'm happy to address it over the next month or so. And I'd ask the chair that we keep this on our agenda for our April meeting as well, so that I could give you any updates or address the matter in greater detail.
Absolutely. Oh, I have a question. Is the bucket that everything goes in, is it a school bucket or is it a town bucket?
So the regulations, thankfully, one of the things that our organization said very early in the process is that you've got some, not most, but you have some regional vote techs who have it in their regional agreement about apportionment. Ours is not in our regional agreement. We've done a lot to our regional agreement, but not that. But ours happens to be in school committee policy. So one of the biggest arguments that a school committee member, as an individual or collectively, could make is the idea of the loss of local control on matters that are best suited to be determined by the representatives of the communities that make up the district. So I think there's an argument to be made there. I would say that would have been the headliner if they had not put that in there. So the language as written honors the fact that if we are apportioning seats, however this committee decides to do it. Right now, we base it on the size of an eighth grade population. If in two years you wanted to change it to something else, you have the power, you'd have the power to do that. We want you to retain that power, and that seems to be the case. So there's a Hanover bucket, there's a Situit bucket, and the lottery works if there are more applicants than there are available seats. So if we have an under-enrolled community where that's, if there are more seats than there are applicants, there's no lottery, which has essentially been the case for all the years we've apportioned. It's just that everybody has submitted their performance documentation and been ran for. So certainly more to be said on this.
My biggest fear is that the town is blocking in the lottery. And, you know, Hanover kids keep getting pulled out, and all of a sudden, Hannah was going, we have a...
For Bob?
30% increase to our budget?
You're talking about some financial volatility. And I will tell you that for some of my colleagues who I've talked to who don't have apportionment, that is absolutely near the top of their concerns list. Number one, the idea that in a one bucket lottery, you might have a historically under-enrolled community. And I will use George as an example, but here's how it could go. Six kids from Cohasset apply, and none of them get pulled out of the bucket. And so is that statistically possible? I think so. You know, I think you have a far greater chance of that happening than, you know, 82 applications from Rockland. But so you have that, you have that potential for a low incidence town to have no representation, which flies in the face of how I think we all feel about skin in the game. We share the bills, we share the access, et cetera. But the financial volatility, when we think about all that we did with the building project and making estimates on demand, I think that that would cause a lot of disruption to say that on any given year, whichever way the bingo balls fall, it could lead to rather odd variances. I'm sure there's a statistical explanation for how, you know, how could you have 80 bingo balls for one town and have none of them pulled out? I don't, I don't, okay, I don't necessarily want to go to those extremes, but those are two valid points that other school districts have raised. So by preserving that local agreement, the idea that if there's a local agreement, we at least have the ability to preserve that part of the process. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
And then, do you have, your decision from talking to your constituencies, is there anybody in the state using this formula we got?
There are two regional voters. Yep, I can speak to briefly. Assabod Valley is using a modified lottery where there is some prerequisite criteria. And then they go into a lottery, they've been using that for two years. And Greater New Bedford Vote Tech has been developing a lottery model. I couldn't quote you the details, but the thousand-foot answer is Assabod and Greater New Bedford. Worcester Tech, which is not a regional, but it is a standalone city vocational, like Lynn Tech, right away. A Quincy, exactly. So Worcester Tech has a lottery model. They use something called tiers. So in other words, they'll offer admission if you fall into one of the tiers based on your performance level, I'll leave it at that. So let's say all the kids who have very few absences and no suspensions, and, you know, they go in tier one. And so it depends on how many kids are in tier one, pull out the names. If there are still slots left over, they'll go to tier two. So that's a slight variation on the model, which in the past, I think, has been seen as a, that's an interesting way of preserving criteria while still saying that that having some sort of lottery component is in the mix. So where this, the real question is, how much will these regulations allow for local modification? And so I'll give you, I can tell you what it does say now. We don't have, the state is saying, you don't have to use attendance, you don't have to use discipline, you don't have to use interest. In fact, you don't have to use any criteria, and you could use what would be called a blind lottery, which would simply mean you've applied, your name goes into a, you know, we'll have Crystal design a randomized lottery thing, we'll go on Zoom. And I mean, charter schools who have oversubscribed, this has been a normal course of business for decades. It's not radically new. The question is whether it fits us. And so that is how we're, you know, that's how the, we're trying to at least raise people's awareness about this, and that includes this conversation here. So very few have done that. So I do think there'll be a lottery. I think as of right now, the regulations will say there's a lottery. The question is, can we have any control over structure in that? Do we have, I call them gatekeeper criteria. Do we have anything that we could say that might say, if you've had a really serious disciplinary offense or if you've had excessive absenteeism, could that prevent you from getting into the lottery? Those are the conversations over the next 30 to 40 days that I think are going to be had. And I think there's room for multiple opinions here. I do think there's room to have a functioning lottery. I do think that we have to have some gatekeeper criteria. And a weighted lottery would speak to those folks, and most of the folks I talked to, who say, how are we going to motivate those middle school kids if a lottery means it's totally random?
Tony, Tom, I can interrupt in a second. So I get what the state's trying to do, and I've read enough articles now that, you know, they're trying to be fair. And so I just play it out as a parent of a kid who's done all the right things in school. They've gone every day to class, they've got good grades, they never get in trouble. They're more motivated than you can imagine to, in fact, go to the school because it's good for them and their future. And what the state's doing in this case is they're throwing kids, they're not giving any incentive for kids who are good kids. I get the gatekeeper part, if you have more than this many absences, but what, and I get, there's nothing you can do about it. But I'm just saying, the spirit of fairness, when someone has to go talk to parents, maybe it's your guidance counselor who does, it's kind of a tough pill to swallow if it's my kid, who's frankly just done all the right things, and let's say in Ashfield, we're oversubscribed, and they don't get in.
Joe, you've summarized, I think, the major parental community sentiment. It's the idea that I have no control regardless of what I've done. All admissions policies, I will say, have an extenuating circumstances appeal process. And so if somebody didn't meet a certain criterion and they were extenuating circumstances, that is something that applicants can always address. But, so to your point, Joe, and I'll lend it here, is Amy Dow, our admissions director, when she has to talk to a parent and provide the bad news that they weren't admitted, they're from an oversubscribed town, Amy can say to the parent, your child is at this point on the waiting list, but here's where they lost points. It was their attendance, or it was the grade, or something like that. The phone conversation now almost seems irrelevant because the answer will literally be the same for every kid under the current, no, most likely under the current model. The model does allow for a few extra raffle tickets, but not to the level where I think you could have additional weights. So that child you just described, maybe in a weighted lottery, should be able to have four or five tickets in the bucket rather than one. Right now, it's just one, and so from an assessment, anyway, I have a lot of opinions on how to do a better design on that, but it's not satisfying folks who think, I got it. Some kids might have had an extenuating circumstance, but for the kids that are doing X, Y, and Z, it doesn't seem to be any real lift to their candidacy. So rest assured, we're going to work hard on this, and I'll bring you back more information.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. And Mr. Chair, I'll just note that in document five, I'll give you, as I do each spring, update on my annual goals regarding cybersecurity, artificial intelligence, professional development, and student assessment data. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, new business. And that's for motion to approve the Capitres Flash will quest to travel to Rhode Island Convention Center on March 28th, 2025.
Motion.
Second. Better get Hanover and Rockland. Okay, Abington?
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanover?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Ashfield?
Yes.
Norwell?
Yes.
Rockland?
Yes.
Situit?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yeah.
Unanimous. Okay, donations. I ask for motion to accept donations from our M E T and automotive departments, which would be the manufacturing, engineering, technology, new and unused equipment from Accurounds and Avon, automotive, 2012 Ford Explorer and 2019 Ford Ranger from Mass DOT in Bridgewater, and automotive, a new coolant machine and a differential machine, along with necessary supplies from Cork, price up to...
I'll second it.
Okay. Good choice, and...
Okay, so relationship can continue too?
Oh, you're wrong. Wait, Sean. Abington?
Yes. I apologize, may I just make a quick comment on that? I just wanted, for the record, I want to say thanks to Bob Mahoney, who opened the door for us to obtain these two vehicles from Mass DOT, and we're going to be able to use them for the automotive program certainly, but also use them for school function. So thank you, Bob, for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Abington was yes, correct?
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanover?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Ashfield?
Yes.
Norwell?
Yes.
Rockland?
Yes.
Situit?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Unanimous, Jim?
Yep, thank you.
Are there any requests for action? Seeing none, I, I'll extend motion to adjourn the school committee. So move, but I'll be respectful. Second. Abington?
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanover?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Ashfield?
Yes.
Norwell?
Yes.
Rockland?
Yes.
Situit?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
And that's also unanimous. Fairly apparent.
No, thank you.
You get the gavel. Use it up.
Spare the school buildings committee. A public comment, are there any comments tonight from the public for the school building committee? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Seeing none, we'll move on, a vote to approve the minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the February twelfth, twenty twenty five school building committee meeting.
Motion.
Rockland, second, Cituit, any discussion? Okay, the roll call, Bob Hayward, yes, Tom Hickey?
Yes.
George Cooney?
Yes.
Jim Cawthon?
Yes.
Tom Mahoney?
Yes.
Jack Manning?
Yes.
Joe Zandalo?
Yes.
Tom Petraselli?
Yes.
Dustin Ridden?
Yes.
Dan Shaw, Woodie?
Yes.
And Frank Moll?
Yes.
Unanimous on that. Kevin Sullivan, you here?
Sir. Good evening, good to see everyone. Uh, we've already approved the minutes, correct?
Yep.
Okay, uh, we actually only have one invoice for this. Uh, for this meeting, we received, uh, design development invoice from D R A. Uh, work backwards for five hundred and five thousand dollars. There was also, uh, two thousand nine hundred fifty dollars and forty cents. For traffic study services that happened, uh, under the previous phase. So, uh, design development is moving forward, uh, you know, on a weekly basis and. And advancing the design and this is, uh, the first invoice from D R A, we move forward.
Has it been in the drawing, from the design?
The, the drawings are being advanced, they haven't been published, but yes, they're, they're being worked on. After they answer, I think Judd or Andrew or Carl might be on, if there's any other questions.
Question on the invoices. I'll entertain a motion to approve that invoice.
Make motion.
Uh, Dustin and George, go second it, thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, Bob Hayward, yes. Tom Hickey?
Yes.
George Cooney?
Yes.
Jim Cawthon?
Yes.
Bob Mahoney?
Yes.
Jack Manning?
Yes.
Joe Zandalo?
Yes.
Tom Petraselli?
Yes.
Dustin Ridden?
Yes.
Dan Shaw, Woodie?
Yes.
And Frank Moll?
Yes.
Thanks, Frank. Project updates, Kevin?
Okay, thank you. Uh, so this is just a budget update, we had previously been looking at. Just the feasibility study schematic design archival budget, which is the two million dollars, uh, we, we finished that phase. Uh, I think throughout the course of, of that, we were giving monthly updates and we were projecting, we probably have savings of roughly three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, meaning we didn't come close to spending the full, the full two million dollars. Uh, in actuality, we only, that, you know, we spent, uh, one million six hundred five thousand eight hundred sixteen. Uh, so the savings are actually closer to four hundred thousand dollars, three hundred ninety four, uh, little over three hundred ninety four thousand, which I think is really good. Yeah, experience, uh, doesn't happen on most of these projects, uh, so. Um, we'll continue, hopefully that can, you know, go towards something, um. Else in the project. And this is. This is, uh, I guess the subcategories, uh, similar to what we, what we reviewed in the summer when we were submitting our big budget to the M S B A. Uh, so. The total project budget is really the same, the same two seventy six, four hundred forty nine thousand, four hundred eighty. And then we'll continue to update this as invoices come in. Uh, the only change from what we had been looking at previously was we've now received. Uh, one invoice from D R A right here at five hundred and five thousand dollars. Uh, you know, under the design development, so. Uh, this will continue to get updated and then it'll get, you know, probably more exciting and, 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 uh, interesting as we eventually go to bid. And start actualizing the, the construction pile of budget, which is the biggest wild card, so. Uh, any questions on, on the budget? I, yes, sir.
Um, I think we mentioned it last time around, that was how tariffs might come into play.
Sure, so.
You see any, any inkling of that coming our way?
So, o- on the most recent bids and, and just say over the past thirty days. My experience, know that the bid market is actually really competitive and positive right now, I think. Maybe it's because folks are concerned, you know, that your average contractor, subcontractor doesn't know what's going to happen six months or a year from now. So they're really sharpening their pencils to secure work. Now, what that means six months or nine months from now, if, if the tariffs result in higher prices, no one knows yet. You, you know, e- even the, you know, the cost estimates, you know, I've, I've, I've heard. Uh, speculation of one to three percent on, and not on the project, but on like whatever specific trade that impacts, but that's a hundred percent speculative. But keep an eye on Suffolk, who's, who's on the call right now. They have a really robust, uh, cost estimating department and. Uh, they actually issued a memo, which, you know, Tom, that was one of the, and we can, we can share it with the, uh, with the school committees, for building committee after this. And it really just summarizes kind of what they think may happen and, and again. Probably speculative and we'll do updates on a monthly basis, but. One of the reasons why we have, you know, healthy contingencies and, and we're gonna, and we, we have, we have. We have a lot of time being in a CMRIS process to, to make sure that if we have to make any adjustments, order something early. Or value management, something to maybe like a different type of flooring, w- we'll, we'll be able to do that to make sure we stay on budget.
If, if there turns out that there is a hit.
Yeah.
Um, you gotta let us know.
Absolutely, we'll let you know what, before we, before we even make a decision, we'll just say, you know. And that wouldn't be nine months or twelve months from now, when, when we're doing that.
Um, so going into it, we were expecting it to be this much and the reality of. What it turned out to be is this much plus.
Yes, exactly, we're gonna have, so we're in design development right now, there's, um. Several cost estimates that will take place during this D D phase, there'll be additional cost estimates that happen during construction document CDs. And so we're really, we have all these milestones where we're really. Uh, double, triple checking, you know, the construction budget that we put together during schematic design to make sure that we're still on track. And, um, you know, baked into this is inflation, escalation.
Yeah.
Uh, contingencies that, you know, will bring us all the way up to that two hundred and twenty three million dollar construction. And as the design progresses, those buckets get smaller and they go into the actual high numbers for the, you know, for the, for the trades, so. We'll, we'll be updating you, if not monthly, every couple of month and, every couple of months and we won't make any decisions before we bring it to you to make sure. Uh, if the worst happens, how are we gonna manage it, standard budget, you know, it'll be, you know, we'll present options.
This is a question, I thought, probably for Tom and Jim, is if we took, uh, bonding out sooner than expected, what's the interest? Would, would be, would that we had to, say we had an opportunity to avoid the twenty five percent on a tariff, those people, just. And if we took the bond out earlier. Would it be close to that twenty five percent? Of that interest onto the. Budget, like if we, we had the opportunity to buy the steel now? And rather than later. When the, the tariff would kick in, but if we took up money to do that now, would that stop the whole bond process that early, then the interest would not be beneficial?
The current rates for interest that we were using for all of our projections were three and three quarter percent for the bond anticipation notes. Um, there's a, I think there's a, that's a good working theory that if we were to. If we were to go prior to seeing the full impact of the tariffs, uh. You're, you're saying that we might be able to avoid some of the pain that would come with it.
Even if you reserve, you don't know if it's possible, we say, if you reserve the amount, we'll certainly on the steel at this rate, and if the rate drops. Then the rate, then you get that way, but it can't go exceed now because we've kind of, it's one of the positive on it now.
Right.
Yes, yeah, if I could just jump in, it's, it's gonna be. The cost benefit analysis, because maybe we could secure the steel at, at a lower price, but then you're paying for. Storage, but, but Mateo, you want, are you on the line right now?
Yeah.
So I'm not sure.
Yeah, can you, can you hear me?
Yeah, we're just gonna put you on the spot right now. Uh, I'm not sure if any of your projects or any of your colleagues are having conversations related to. You know, if the worst happens with steel, can we get ahead of that pre-purchase and, and at least get locked in at a more competitive price? And, and buying steel way earlier than any, anyone else, I mean, I think we're open to having any conversation within reason, but. I, you know, I don't know if, if you've had conversations like that.
Yeah, I mean, um, so on, on our current projects, we've gotten. We've gotten a lot of notice of potential tariffs, but I, I mean, really the, the key word on the street is uncertainty. Um, no one knows what is happening, what is going to stay, what, what is leaving, so we're getting a lot of. Um, you know, letters and notices from subcontractors and suppliers saying, we are going to be increasing our prices, but nothing has. Um, kind of, you know, materialized as of yet. Uh, again, because I think everything is just so in flux, uh, in, in terms of pre-purchasing of steel, so. That would have to be on a, uh, on a strictly like raw material basis, right? Cause obviously we, we still have to go through design and, and, um. That'll be quite some time until we're at a point where we're ready to, to buy and fabricate steel. Um, so I, I, I would tend to agree with, with Kevin in terms of, um. You know, there's probably limited upside, right? You're, you're, you're buying in your risk, but you don't know if that. Is going to come down or up as of right now, but you are incurring costs in terms of. You know, there's going to be some inefficiencies in terms of just buying raw steel as opposed to knowing you're fabricating and buying it. Exactly, uh, and then the storage, so, um. I, I, I think as of right now, because things are still so fluid, I, I would not. Recommend that we try to buy something like. Steel as of right now, right? There, there are some, some pre-purchase elements that we are going to include with. You know, I think switchgear and generator, uh, and those longer lead electrical items, but, um. We'll, we'll continue to, to kind of monitor and.
Appreciate that feedback, as you indicated, we're still going through a design process to really know exactly how much we're gonna order, um. But we've had conversations about early packages, and then where they see, CMRS proj- projects are structured with. Early site work and sometimes early steel.
A little further down the road, but I'm just saying, the, the fight we just had to go get this cool, go back to the town and say. Uh, now we need another twenty five percent on top of this.
Yeah, that's.
We, you know, it's, it's, if there's any way that we can at least show efforts that we have tried to nip the bud. You know, in the front part here, uh, and be proactive with it. Um, just, it's, it's a question I had about interest rates, but the bonding.
Yeah, and I think it's a, it's a good question and, and, you know, we'll continue to, to talk about. What measures we have to take to protect ourselves.
My brother told me he works in, you know, this, this.
Yeah, it's always been more on her lead time too, so that's, we're gonna have to really, uh, order earlier than we expected.
Right.
And, any other budget related questions? Okay, I'm gonna put you on the spot there. Okay, that's what he's there for. Thanks, Mr. Eric. Um, this is. This is something that, that we went over last time, again. Um, high level schedule update. Uh, there's also a more detailed schedule, monthly report that I email out every month, you should have got that last week. This is really ten thousand feet, where are we right now? You know, we're in design development, we'll continue, uh, in that process till June, then we'll move into CDs, construction documents, that's all, you know, a longer process and. And, and that'll take place, you know, till. February, March or April, depending on a couple of things, and, and whether or not we do any early site work or any, or pre-purchase. Yeah, but we really expect to be doing pre-qualification, um, in early twenty twenty six. And going on to bid, you know, early twenty twenty six, spring of twenty six, so we're ready to start the major construction in the summer of twenty twenty six, so. We'll continue to refine the schedule and there's, there's more detail if you want, on, on the documents I, I, I email out. Um, yes, sir.
Uh, so you, you specified, you said something about early site work.
Yeah.
Would that impact the function of the school as it sits now? If we do have to do early site work?
That's, that's a great question, and, and we actually did a, you know, folks from Suffolk, D R A, Westfield. And Tom walked, uh, super technically walked the site two weeks ago. Uh, just to start those conversations, because I think everyone agrees, we want to start as early as we can, but we don't wanna. Uh, have a senior miss out on a season or, or really disrupt school, um. So we're having those conversations, um, we, we think we can. Do some things early without any dis- any major disruption to athletics or, and especially education.
And so what that means, uh, Dustin, is that the class of twenty six, I can say confidently, will be able to complete their. Senior year with what we would say is probably the, the Latin, next year is about the last year of normal. So a graduation on our ball fields in June of twenty six.
Yeah.
A spring sports season where we can host home games. Uh, we should be able to check those boxes, but prior to the end of the school year. We may start to feather in some sort of scheduling so that you can imagine that during the summer of twenty six. Suffolk would fence in the athletic area.
Hmm.
Uh, and would be working to create a dedicated means of egress and access for any, any construction vehicles. And also look at the development of the parcel of land that goes out to Main Street, uh, for, uh. For parking for workers and the potential for adding parking in the front of our school when you leave here tonight and you see the flagpole and. And the nice area that Porticulture has dealt with, uh, that may be, uh, uh, we might pave paradise and put up a parking lot. Right there for an extra fifty spots, because we're gonna have to squeeze some of the student log here on the side. All said and done, with a few traffic flow adjustments, it should be a normal senior year for those kids.
Right, and just to follow up on that, have, uh, there been any conversations with the Thai handover about possibly using. The main street access as egress for the construction vehicles, cause I know that can create a bit of an issue.
Yes.
Forward, especially with the embers and things like that.
Yes, so, um, we had a conversation. Oh, it might have been maybe six or nine months ago with the traffic safety officer from H P D who said that. While, while I'm of the opinion that that should not be a permanent.
Yeah, no.
But, but for the, but for the, from a pure public safety traffic flow, turn left, turn right when workers are done with their shift. There, there were no, there were no concerns raised.
Okay. Thank you.
You have another question, this, the, the school, um. Leaching field, right?
Yeah.
Where is it?
That new parking lot I just mentioned.
Oh, okay, so it's not, so in other words, it's not under the ball field where we would. Interrupt it if we're building, you know, so for.
Correct, it's, it, what we have right now, Dan, is out front and where we end up with this new building project, it's, we'll need. Uh, a wastewater treatment building.
Oh, yeah, I'm just worried about, I'm worried about now, if we, does a new building have salt or is it just, um, flat land?
I believe it's flat.
Yeah, it's, yeah, all right, so you don't have to dig into the ground, separate.
I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
You know, you, we've been talking about steel and pre-purchasing it, and then. Storage. What is the chance that there's, you know, a place you could put a whole bunch of the steel that is to be used in the construction of a building? On site? And then there would not be a storage fee because it's on this property for this?
Yeah, usually, I mean, every, Mateo, feel free to jump in, but, you know, as.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead, Mateo.
Sorry, just real quick, so like if we were pre-purchasing steel, it would have to be, you know, ahead of it being fabricated, so you would be. Looking at shipping downward, a very, very big pieces of steel and then shipping it back up to Canada. So, um, I, I, I think whatever savings you would have in, yeah, like, a- and then you would have to ship it back down here, right? So, um, you're tripling your, your, um, shipping costs and I think that would probably outweigh any savings and, um.
Yeah, just to clarify, George, you just said in general, like, once the steel's been fabricated and ready to be, you know, erected.
Yeah.
You're, you're just talking about how do you normally store it on site, is it stored somewhere else?
Yeah.
Yeah, so normally, you know, you will early site work for it first and there's lay down areas and, and the steel's brought in.
Yeah.
You know, in bundles.
Suffolk has called out a lay, a layout area, George, behind, uh, the. I- in the small student, the small, where we park our buses.
Yeah.
In the, in the, uh, the western corner there, where what we, what, what is showing is a detention on break now, so. They have called out space for that purpose.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, steel, steel is typically delivered like every day or other day, it, it, we don't store a ton of it onsite, this will kind of come as, as it's needed.
If we had to, uh, you, you kind of scared me there when you said it gets, it gets made in Canada, then it comes down here.
He was going back to the, the original question, which is like, can we just buy it now? Or, you know, which means.
If we're storing the raw steel.
We'd have to, it'd be have a few road trips.
So the, the, the final dimensions of the finished product of the I beam is gonna go up. The halls are drilled and all that stuff is done. In what order, so there's a piece of steel, it comes out of the steel mill and then it has to get. Fabricated. Fabricated, essentially, yeah. And that's, does, does the steel come from Canada?
It, well, that's certainly one of the most common places, uh, Mateo, are there any other places that you're back to getting steel from on recent projects?
Not, not that I know of, I mean, we, we obviously go out to bid to everyone, but, um. Typically, the fabrication happens in Canada. Typically, the fabrication happens in Canada.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, the raw, the raw stock might be here in the U S, but fabrication is usually in Canada.
So the, the finished product with the final fabrication, oh, that takes place in Canada. And then it gets delivered and it's put in that storage area you were talking.
Yeah, the lay down here.
Yeah. Yeah, lay down here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you discount, Mateo, if you have somebody that's a tool citizen?
I will definitely ask.
I'll volunteer to drive to, to drive some of the steel down here, we appreciate it, but any others questions on this part of the schedule? Okay, uh, I think I just had one more, and you probably can't read this, I'll email it out. We're, as consultants, we're meeting multiple times every week, uh, as a working group, which includes the owner, um. We're meeting uh every, and so this working group, uh, this is basically the work, it's a draft work plan. And we have different specialties and some consultants of D R A coming in. To just make sure, uh, we're staying on schedule and having productive conversations, uh, with Suffolk, you know, Leftfield and opposite line. Uh, we've only had one to date and we just talked about some general site issues, we're we're trying to get this wastewater treatment and that's something that we need to. Continue to really ramp up, uh, D R A's, you know, working on that with the subcontractors. Uh, but I want to put this out to the group, certainly not required, uh, I'll email this out and I just ask that you take a look at. You know, it's every other week, so the next one we have is the twenty sixth, which is a week from today. And we're gonna be talking about exterior design concepts, so. Um, I encourage you, it's it's a Teams or a Zoom meeting, if you, if there's any of these topics that are interesting to you, you have questions. I encourage you to, even if you can jump on to fifteen minutes, ask some questions, get some information, again, not required, but. Um, it could be an à la carte thing where you're not interested in exterior design, but if you wanna hear more about. Um, the M E P, you know, and the building management systems, so you can, you could actually participate in that, so I'll email this out to the group and. And just give me a heads up, I'll send you a link.
It's a shoot time.
Yeah, sorry, it's it's every Wednesday at three P M. And that's, it's actually, I can't believe it, oh, there's one more. And uh, I have to apologize to Mateo because I didn't ask him if I could do this, but. Uh, I think two weeks from today, Wednesday, April first perhaps, or second. Uh, we're gonna be, a few of us are gonna go to Diamond Botec, which is uh. Suffolk is working on right now, they just walked the site, they're in the middle of construction. Um, again, not required, but if anyone is interested in in doing that, you know, just give me a heads up and. It'll be a pretty casual thing, I think we just wanna, you know, get get a lay of the land, see how things are going over there. Everyone has my, everyone has my number and my and my email, so let me know if you're interested.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Thing. I want to entertain a motion to adjourn the school building committee meeting, so, you want to act as your right suituit, second by. Uh, women's, well, they're waiting now, you can reverse it some.
Okay.
I call the roll. Bob Hayward, yes.
Tom Hickey.
Yes.
George Cooney.
Yes.
Jim Cawthon.
Yes.
Bob Mahoney.
Yes.
Jack Manning.
Yes.
Gil Zambello.
Yes.
Tom Petrasoli.
Yes.
Dustin Ridden.
Yes.
Dan Shaw, would you?
Yes.
And Frank Moll.
Yes.
Unanimous, we are adjourned.